Good evening. Thank you to everybody that have come to the work session. And so therefore, we're going to go ahead and get started. And we're going to call up, there was one that Ms. Waddell failed to put on here, had asked him to be here at 4:00, so we're going to call it Mr. Monte Kirkens. It is not over here, but you have five minutes.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much for allowing us to come.
Would you put that mic down, Mr. Beattie? Thank you.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. My name is Tammy Hudson, and I have the privilege of serving as an executive director for Howard's Harbor Foundation. It's a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that houses recovery residents coming out of a treatment program for veterans and others. But today I stand before you to share the vision of our Recovery Bowl. It's a community fellowship event, not only designed to promote sobriety, but to celebrate the strength and resilience of our sober living community. This event will unite those of our recovery during, on their recovery journey, their families, and our first responders, many of whom have been the first link in certain saving lives threatened by addiction. Addiction is a disease that doesn't recognize city lemons or neighborhood limes. It touches every part of our city, our homes, our families, our businesses, and our faith communities. Many of us here today have seen a loved one struggle, or perhaps we faced it ourselves. The ripple effect of addiction will be felt, is felt, in lost jobs, broken relationships, overwhelmed health systems, and public safety concerns. The Recovery Bowl offers Florence a positive proactive response. It provides a safe, alcohol-free environment for socialization, for fellowship, and healing, where gratitude can be shared with first responders on a personal level, and where those working towards sobriety can feel seen, supported, and celebrated. We are asking for your financial support to help make the event a success. Your investment will ensure we can cover costs such as land rentals, food, transportation for participants, promotional outreach, and the symbolic T-shirts that each participant will wear with pride. By supporting the Recovery Bowl, the City of Florence sends a clear message that we stand together as a community in fighting the disease of addiction and in lifting up individuals striving for a better sober life. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we just received the handouts.
Okay.
So we'll get back with you, okay?
Sure, thank you.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Chiefs.
Good afternoon. Your week got out of the end on the consent agenda. This is two separate invoices from Williams Fire Apparatus totaling $3,311.97. They came up with some repairs on Tower 1 for $2,328.47, and then another repair on Engine 1 for $983.50. This is a big expense out of the count, 261-42200. Those repairs have been made. The trucks are back in service. Someone wrote their due. So any questions on those?
No.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I've got one item. It's Item P. The Information Systems Department would like to enter in their contract with Professional Two-Way Radio to install four multisensor cameras downtown. So the contract's $11,900, and it's from budgeted funds out of 110, 1147, 48100.
Do you have any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you. Mary.
How are you all this afternoon? I have two items on the agenda. The first one is 11H is a contract with Renegre Vincent. This is a contract to fit in our Center Star substation. We are replacing that substation with a larger one, and for $21,500. We're going to fit in our entire property versus just a small section that's fenced around you.
Okay.
Any questions? The second I have is 13A, which is our 2026 budget. And it's, I'm just going to kind of do you an overview of it. I know y'all have had it for a while. If you have questions, you're welcome to ask me any questions that you have. But it's $143.6 million for our budget this year. We anticipate 75% of it being for purchased power, 25% for all of our operations and maintenance expenses. This is not included, a cost of living. Our budget will be amended if that's agreed upon in the fall. So any questions?
Mary, do you mind explaining how your budget for the public, how yours works? Because yours is not general fund.
Correct.
Can you explain that breakdown, that separation of that, so that people understand?
I would be happy to.
Thank you.
So the electricity department is solely funded from our rate payers, meaning that we only get funds to our department from the people that are paying their power bills. All the other funds we get are people that rent our poles, like AT&amp;T, Comcast, and so forth, rent pole space, and we get a few, a little bit from them. But we are solely self-funded, the electricity department is, and it does not get a penny from the City of Florence General Fund at all.
Okay.
So.
Thank you. Y'all have any questions?
Simple way to put that.
Right. I just wanted to make that.
Yes.
So people will understand that it's totally a different.
Totally different.
Totally entity.
Yes, it's own enterprise fund.
Yeah, different from the general fund budget.
Yes.
So you based your budget on the current rates with TBA?
Correct.
Do you anticipate those going up?
We definitely anticipate them going up. We.
How would that affect your budget?
Our budget will, when you look at our budget currently, we're at a, I mean, taken away some CETA funding, we're about a $2 million deficit. And we plan to make that hole when we have an increase at some point in the future to correct that. So we should be even, or close to even at that point.
So this budget is $2 million in the red?
It's currently three. We're getting about 1.3 from CETA, which will put us around $2 million. So currently, it's $2 million. We're taking out of cash to fund the budget.
Okay. If you were a business, you would be closing?
Well, we have cash to, that's why we have cash in the bank, is to fund this. But yes, it's not a positive thing at all to be taken out of cash.
How many years have you been in the red at the end of this budget?
This is the first year that we have.
Okay.
In many years.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I have three things on the agenda this afternoon. The first one is a grant with Northwest RC&amp;D for $84,000. It's a no-match grant, so no city funds will be expended. Assuming we get this grant, we're just giving permission to apply for it. Just going to buy some more of the self-watering pots, hanging baskets to go downtown. If you notice them on Court Street, there's some on Mobile Plaza now. This will just add to that number if we get it or part of it. Any questions about that? All right. Next one is.
Does the grant include running the water to it to be self-watering?
No, we got a guy that comes and waters them. He waters them about once a week, and he had water for this year, to be honest, because it rains a lot. But generally, in the drought of a summer, he'll water them twice a week. They got a reservoir in them, that's a self-watering pot, so they don't have to water them.
So he fills those?
He does.
Got you.
Yeah. All right. You have a question on that one? The next one is another no-matching grant from Keep America Beautiful through Coca-Cola. This is for litter cleanup supplies. So if we get it, we'll get supplies to do the litter cleanups that we do throughout the year. We, you know, do those often, just buy the stuff for it. So once again, it's a good deal for us. Don't know if we'll get it or not. Any questions on that one? Okay. And then finally, I have a resolution. We're paying off an invoice from Oil Equipment Company. We had emergency repairs to the fueling system. We had a gauge that went bad, and so this is the labor to come reinstall that gauge and get it back into service. So it's a pretty quick repair, $487. Questions? Oh, one other thing. We do have this garbage note. Juneteenth is Thursday, and so garbage and recycle for Thursday and Friday customers will be one day late. So we won't collect on Thursday. We will collect Thursdays on Fridays and Fridays on Saturdays, which is our pattern for most holidays and fall through the week.
One more thing, David. And of course, we know that, what you just addressed about picking up old furniture or stuff at apartments, do you mind going over that?
It may have 24, but the city code changed so that businesses are no longer serviced by the street department. The street department's residential service only. So these apartments, these businesses, and anything like that that generates or has stuff dumped in front of them are responsible for having their own stuff hauled off. That could be Walmart. That could be a six-unit department up here on Sheridan Avenue. But they are responsible now for hauling their own stuff off. And so we have given most of them, they pass. In other words, if they have it, we've gone, got it one more time, sent them a letter again, saying, hey, don't do this again. And then they got to get a contractor or figure out a way to do it. A lot of them are doing a great job of it. We have a few that are problems. But generally speaking, they're doing a pretty good job of this. And we do have some issues from time to time.
Thank you, and thank you all for taking care of the issues that I have. So let me ask you this, just for clarity, of course, I know. But if it's out there, of course, it is not a street department issue, an apartment, who do they need to call?
Call the building department, who enforces city codes. So the building department will send an inspector out there to look at whatever the issue may be, and can contact the apartment manager and tell them they have to haul their stuff.
Okay.
And you don't pick up TVs and refrigerators?
Yeah, so of course, the marginal rules changed on those. They can be brought to the landfill. TVs can be put in dumpster box. If it's business, it has to, or whatever dumpster box. They can bring the landfill recycle center, and then dispose it properly.
That's any type of electronics or something?
No, that's TVs and computer monitors.
Or they're in a home, could be?
The landfill, to go to a line landfill.
But you have to take that yourself. The city doesn't pick those?
Correct, correct. Yeah, the same for refrigerators. They can take Freon. Freon's regulated by EPA. And so to be thrown away at our landfill, they would have to have the Freon removed by a licensed guy. We don't have a licensed guy anymore. So you can take them to the scrap metal places. What I tell people, they'll buy them from you. Or you can take them to the, if you put them out on the curb, people are going to get them, you know? So give them the scrap metal value of those things. But you can always call the office if you got questions.
Okay. What's that number? Thank you. Y'all don't put them on the curb, just in case somebody will come get them. Then we get inundated with these calls.
Any questions? You can go through the website now, too, and report stuff, any issues that you may have, and that gets routed to whoever's responsible for it.
All right. Thank you so much for taking the time.
Thank you for working East Florence as hard as you do.
We should have.
Afternoon. I have two items on the consent agenda. Item J is an agreement with, professional engineering services agreement with the Engineers of the South. This is a renewal of our agreement that we, I think we renewed it for three years. So this is just standard renewal. The only major change was the liability was upped, was increased from $500,000 to $100,000. But other than that, it's the exact same agreement that we've had in place for the last three years.
$500,000 to $100,000?
Sorry, $1 million, sorry.
Left a bet.
Left a zero off, yeah. $1 million. Any questions on that? And then Item M is an agreement with Magglio Services. It's actually for the creation and implementation of PhotoPoint. This is a workflow that allows us to attach photo documentation to anything that we do with an address, any gas service, any water service, anything that we do. We can actually attach a photo documentation basically proving what we did. It also may help us in the case of liability, if there's ever any kind of damage that results from that. So it's an amount of $2,000. So this will be an additional workflow with the creation of PhotoPoint in FlowGIS. Any questions with that?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You?
Good afternoon. We have four items. First item is Item G, which is a contract with Chain &amp; Fence. And they will be providing and installing 275 feet of chain link fence at Broad River Recreation Center. This will be around the playground area. And then also, they'll be repairing the gate at Handy Recreation Center, going there around kind of.
Back somewhere?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. The total is $4,600.
That's for both of them?
For both, yes, ma'am.
Is this the area Mr. Foster had emailed you about?
Yes, sir, it sure is.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, yeah. And I think that the fire department has now installed their construction fixing around there.
It finally quit raining?
Yes.
Well, maybe it did.
A little bit.
It was dry day or two.
Yes. Next item is Item K, and this is a contract with Shells Overhead Door. And they will be providing and installing a slide gate operator solar kit and wireless keypad at the Sports Complex. And this will be $7,967.28. Next one is Item L, Jerry Pay Turf and Irrigation. And this is a payment for an invoice that they did when they repaired a grinder at the Sports Complex, and this amount is $360. Next item is O, Blades, Shades, and Shutters. And they will provide and install some wood lines at Broad River Recreation Center. The total amount is $2,979.99. I think you were so kind to add a change order for the bunker replacement. And so this is a change order for some additional sidewalk that they had to do to complete the bunker renovation. The total amount is $23,848.75.
What was the total of everything?
The total contract was $134,500, so added that to it, $23,848.75. I think the estimate was $170,000, I think so, so we're still below that.
This was budgeted from?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, fine. Thank you. Thank you for adding that.
So we need a motion on the second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Edwards, second by Mr. Griffin, all in favor.
Thank y'all very much. Good afternoon.
I think the mayor is here yet.
Good afternoon. I have two items on the regular agenda. Items 12D and 12E. The first one is Alcohol Beverage License Application for the operation of automobile self-service station convenience foods with all premises of beer and wine by Cox Creek Food Mart Incorporated, doing business as Walloho, located at 825 Cox Creek Parkway here in Florence. And the other one is also an alcohol beverage license application for the operation of automobile self-service station convenience foods with all premises of beer and wine by Star Convenience LLC, doing business as MapCo 930, located at 4401 Chisen Road. And both these businesses have been in operation, have had this license, have all licenses before, so it's a change of ownership.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Chief, Mr.? He's on the page.
I'm ready, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Masur?
Good afternoon. I have two items on the agenda, and I'm going to talk about the resolution to provide voters list, too, for the upcoming election that is on there. I think they listed, I think we listed the mayor as the sponsor, but I drafted it in Bob, and Bob will be handling that, Mr. Lighty. So, but to start with, first item on the regular agenda is an ordinance to comply with Act 2025-280. And this is really just housekeeping. In 2012, the state enacted a sales tax exemption, state sales tax exemption for emergency preparedness supplies for two weekends a year. One on the weekend of the first, starting on the first Friday of July, and the other one starting on the Friday of the last full weekend of February. And anyway, the state sales tax exemption had a provision that cities and counties could join in and exempt, for our purposes, city sales taxes as well on emergency preparedness items. And the city did that, adopted a resolution approving that. And then in 2017, the state enacted what we commonly call the state sales tax, or the sales tax holiday, which is for back-to-school items. And it takes place on the third Friday through the third Sunday of each July. And the city, again, extended the exemption to city sales taxes. In this past legislating session, the legislature adopted an act that requires cities, for state sales tax exemptions, cities have to adopt an ordinance or resolution approving the sales tax exemption if they want to exempt city sales taxes. And the resolution or ordinance has to include an effective date of September 1st and state the duration of the exemption, which can be in perpetuity. And then provide notice of the ordinance or resolution to the State Department of Revenue before July 1st on the year that the exemptions are going to begin. So anyway, this just, again, we already have these exemptions in place. But because of this new act, we have to essentially ratify those exemptions and notify the Department of Revenue before July 1st of this year. And so I'll be glad to answer any questions. I know that's convoluted, but I just made it more complicated than it really is. I was just trying to explain why we're doing it, because we've already done this, but we have to go back and ratify it due to the new procedures that the legislature put in place this past session. And I think that they, in the legislature's defense, I think it was done to protect cities and counties from sales tax exemptions that the state may do in the future, you know, potentially on groceries, for example, or prescription drugs. This will give cities the option to decide whether the cities want to exempt sales taxes well. So that's why they did it. So I think it's a, I think it's a good cause, good for cities. But anyway, any questions? We're not, we're not exempting any sales taxes that we haven't already exempted in the past.
It's just the weekend.
That's correct. It's just, just three weekends out of the year. And it's only for certain items, pretty much back-to-school items or things like generators or emergency radios and such on the emergency preparedness weekend. Okay, thank you. And the second item on the regular agenda is the agreement between the city and Lambert Ezel Durham Architects for design services to design a city hall building to be located at the corner of West Tennessee and Pine Streets, where the old parking deck is being demolished right now. And this was on the agenda two meetings ago and did not receive immediate consideration. And so it was delayed until this week because we only had four people here last time. And Ms. Ubank's couldn't be here tonight, but I know that was an emergency. We had expected to have all five, all six council people here. Anyway, I'll be happy to answer any questions about this contract. We sort of went over it last time, but.
Would the PBA that we received to build this side of the street have anything to do with moving it across the street?
Yes, yes, sir. We will have to. The way the PBA works, the PBA borrows the money, and it's, it's really a fiction, but the PBA owns the property and builds the building and leases it back to the city to, if the lease payments equal the bond payments. It's just the way to, the way it's set up. So the PBA will have to meet and approve the site, the change of the site from this side of the street to where the old parking deck is.
So that need to be done before anything is moved forward? Because in the beginning, we did it before we did that.
Right. We did it in the, we did it before we did anything previously because we were doing a bond issue. And so the money had to be approved and borrowed before the city did anything. But now the money's in the bank, and so it's not an issue if the architectural contract is approved prior to switching the sides. Okay, thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Because the money's in the bank right now, you know? We've had it now for almost five years, well, four years, so.
Do you have any additional questions for?
All right, thank you, Ms. President. And the last item is, it's actually on the consent agenda, but that's a mistake. And I asked earlier today if we could move it to the regular agenda. I'll tell you which item it is. I think it's Item C.
11C, yeah.
Right, and so. So, right, so Item C, this is just something that has to be done if the mayor is running for office in the municipal election. The state code requires that the city provide a list of qualified voters by a certain date. And if the mayor is running for political office, then he or she is disqualified and has to appoint, the council has to appoint someone to act in his stead. And this pretty much, I mean, most years, the mayor is running, or at least since I've been the city attorney. And so the obvious choice is the city clerk treasurer, because the city clerk treasurer is in charge of running the election anyway. So that's all this is. Just authorizing Bob to produce the qualified voter list after the, people have had time to, I mean, you can qualify to vote up until 30 days prior to the election.
Do you have any additional questions for?
All right, thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you. Mayor?
I have two items. The first is 11D. It's a contract proposal from Swatech Vaughn and Bryan to provide lobbying services and strategic consulting services for the City of Florence. For at least the last five years, Philip Bryan has acted in this stead for the city. That has been at a fee of $5,000 per month. And that contract is up for renewal, and they're asking to increase that to $6,000 per month. Mr. Bryan has been invaluable, his group has been invaluable to us over the last number of years, dealing with issues in Montgomery and others. And I'm asking that the council upgrade that and renew that contract. Any questions?
Mr. Higginson?
Is that 12 months out of the year, or is that only during the legislative session?
No, it's 12 months.
Okay.
And I assure you, calling off note over an entire 12 months. There's always something going to happen. The second thing I have is 12C. The second thing I have is 12C. It's a contract with Bubba's Marine Construction LLC for the construction of the McFarland Point Pier project, and I think everyone on the council received this memo from me on June 11th, and I'm asking you to consider for submit a bid by Bubba's Marine LLC for the construction of the McFarland Point Pier. The bid price is $2,962,605, and include labor, equipment, materials, and incidentals necessary. Funding for this project will come from budgeted funds, account number 1969294475. Parks and Recreation Committee Chair, I believe that moving forward with the, matter of fact, the McFarland Point Pier is within the scope of the approved plans for McFarland, and the funding is already available through this year's budget. Any questions?
So is that from that bond?
It is.
That's great, that's great.
Okay.
That's what I was going to add, if I can. This goes back to, similar to the city hall project, when interest rates were so low that it enabled us to do some projects that had been, the public had been asking for for some time, especially with McFarland Park, the campground, of course, as you know, is scheduled to be revamped and rebuilt and enlarged and improved, and of course, we had to tear out the pier that was on the west end, and now this will be via the water, the gateway to the city of Florence down there, is going to be absolutely a phenomenal place, if you're a fisherman, to go fish and even take the family with you. There'll be plenty of parking there, plenty of places to fish, so again, this is from that bond money that is part of the master plan of improving McFarland Park, that the Parking Rec Committee, Mr. Griffin, Mr. Blake, and myself approved sometime back, way back.
Well, and a third thing, the issue here is this project, along with the campground, which we've got 437,000 grant money for, land and water grant, was part of, was complicated. We had to deal with TVA and permitting and environmental and ecologic, you know, all the other issues, we had to be permitted, so it's taken a good bit of time to do this, but I think we'll be very pleased with this project.
Will this be, will there be hating in that area, like a parking lot?
Yeah, there's going to be a parking lot there.
Bill?
Yes, sir.
Do you want to come to the mic and explain what it's going to look like? I mean, I'm, it's like 45 parking spots, I believe, is...
And I think we have to be very, very careful with the soil we disturb, too. I don't, I can't tell you exactly how many parking places, but that area down there, Bill, will all be designed with a parking lot going out to the pier. Some work over to the, if you're facing the water to the ride, that area will be some parking in there, down to where the slough is, it runs, or creek that runs up there, so...
Will this affect or improve the primitive camping in that area, or will it not even have anything to do with that?
Well, hopefully with that, improving that area, which I'm saying facing to the ride, so my ride, we'll be able, that's the kind of the master plan where that primitive camping would be over in that area.
Is this going to be a wooden structure?
No, sir, it'll be a, like a permeable, a different type of structure than a wood, so it'll hopefully last longer.
And also, Mr. Griffin, as you know, now at the end of the road, down at the west end, you've pretty much got to try to find a good spot to turn around and head back. There'll be a roundabout there now, where you, and actually in the middle, I think, decided that we'll have a flagpole in there.
There's a lanchery there right now.
Yeah. There's not going to be, there're going to be, there will be new landscaping with new trees and greenery and that type of thing, very, very nice.
What's the timeframe for this?
I think it's 150 days.
Oh.
Don't quote me on that.
But it's not two years, it's...
No, sir. Took two years to get to where we are right now. He wants to, this time of year, get, move forward, and he's ready to get started on it.
Any other questions? Ms. Simms, if you'll allow me, I want one other comment. If you get a chance, and I don't know what the bills folks are going to get and take care of, but I met today down at the overlook, Senior River Overlook, and I probably see on our social media, the new bike rack there, it's designed by folks down at the University of Alabama, we interviewed the lady who did it, it's actually, it's focusing on our music heritage, much like the sculpture did, and it's in the shape of the trombone, and she did a great job of it. If you get a chance to go down there once they get it...
It was awesome.
Yeah, it's really awesome. Thank you.
Was it donated?
We use grant fines.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Kathy, did you check on, see if most people want to do?
Yes, they do.
Okay, all right, well, the two board appointments for scope 360, both want to be reappointed, so we don't have any, we're open for it this time, so at this time, we'll take a...
I think the gas department's ready.
Oh, yeah.
Gas department, please.
We talked about that pit department.
Ted, do you want to...
I'm sorry, do you want to...
Share about the gas department?
I'd be glad to.
Sure.
So I think most of you have been provided a copy of, or all of you have been provided a copy of the gas and water budgets for fiscal year into 2026. I won't bore you with all the details, but there are no rate increases at this time with gas or water. We do have our normal amount of equipment that we're adding, that we're requesting be added. There's also an addition of one, one position, and that is in the water side, there's no additional positions on gas, and that is for a compliance officer to help us maintain all the changes that are coming, especially like PFAS and all the different things that we have to monitor and meet compliance within wastewater, so... But the main thing to remember is there are no rate increases at this time for gas or water, and to kind of expand on what Barry spoke about earlier, we are strictly ratepayer-funded. We do not, we're not funded through general funds, so everything we do is based off of our ratepayers, the services we provide and the products that we sell, so... Any questions on...
Electricity costs a lot for the gas and water.
That's, that's correct, yes, sir.
I was looking at the bottom line.
Yes.
Have you all discussed with PFAS, will there be a new building?
Yes.
Built?
Yes, and the initial, the initial layout right now is, we're looking, it's looking like we're going to build a building between the current parking lot at Wilson Lake and the baseball field, kind of where the solar panel, solar panels are there, they're up on, they're kind of on poles, on seals there.
Yes.
So kind of somewhere in that area. We're looking to the south, if that makes sense, in the plant.
So it's built away from the water?
Yes, yes, it'll be right there, real close to, to the current facilities there at Wilson Lake. Just because of the layout and the way we're going to have to feed the water and process the water through the plant, we feel like the south would be the, would be the best way, best path forward with that. So, of course, that's in the infancy stages, we're, we're just beginning with all that, but just looking at it from a, from a broad, from a 30,000-foot view, that's, that's kind of what we're looking at to the south.
There were lots of things discussed about that piece of property over the last 20 years, and if some of those things would have taken place, you wouldn't have the room to do what now you know you have to do.
That's, that's correct, yes, the, the area there is going to be critical, that and then also that to the north. So there's a possibility we will use the property to the south end of the north with this project.
Ted, would you, you remind us two things. One is, there's no PFAS in the creek.
Correct. We have all the samples that we've collected, we've been collecting samples at Cypress Creek Water Treatment Plant, Wilson Lake Water Treatment Plant, and then Peck Lane Well, at Houston Hills Well, which Peck Lane Well is now inactive, but Peck Lane, Houston Hills, and Cypress Creek all have non-detex, and we've been collecting those samples quarterly since 2020. So only, the only place that we have detex are at Wilson Lake.
The second thing is, please remind, you know, within the last week or so, everyone got that annual report.
Yes.
Which shows that we're very well in compliance.
Yes.
How do you discuss that when we're talking about PFAS?
Okay, so there is, the Consumer Competence Report, or the annual quality, drinking water quality report that you're referring to, went out, so all of our customers can receive a copy of that. If you did not receive a copy, we encourage you to contact our office, we'll be, you know, be glad to provide you with a copy. But it lists all of our unregulated monitoring, our contaminants that we monitor, it's, it gives a very detailed view of everything that we test for, everything that we monitor for, and we meet or exceed all of the current regulations right now. Now, that will change, you know, once the new regulations go into effect in 2031, but as of, as of today, we meet or exceed all of them, all of our current regulations and meet all of our compliance that we need to.
Should we get pictures of the new water, though?
Yes, sir.
Is it...
We're, we're expecting the latter half of July, maybe first of August, it'll be online. They're nearing completion, and of course, we've got to go through the standard testing, we've got to do, we've got to fill it, and then we've also got to do bacteriological sampling and all the things that are required, so it's, it's getting really, really close, but we anticipate latter part of July, first of August, for that to go online. That's going to be a big benefit, I think it's going to, it's going to increase pressure and volume in all of our areas, and so it's, it's going to be a huge asset.
It'll take a while to fill that thing up.
That's good, 2 billion gallons, it's going to be, it's going to be a pretty good undertaking. But it will also provide us with much-needed storage in case we have, you know, have a severe outage, or we have some, some type of issue where the plants have to be down, that'll give us the required storage that we need, and so that's going to be, going to be a big asset for us.
Thank you. Mr. Henry, if you have some comments?
Yeah, I want to make a couple of comments from our finance committee meeting, if Blake's okay with that, some of the things that we discussed. The question asked earlier about electricity being indirect this year, I just want to point out that our cash equivalents, which is our reserves, is still extremely strong, and one of the measurements that we have to take is, it's called a required coverage factor on our, on our debt service, and we're required in water to have 130%, and we're at 161% plus our reserve, so we're great there. Electricity department have a requirement of 125%, we have 1,050%, so you're good coverage there. And then correct me if I'm wrong on this, but with gas, we're supposed to have 125%, but we have zero debt.
That's correct.
Yeah, so just wanted to point those positive things out that we discussed in these...
Any other comments? Hey, if not, we'll take a 15-minute break, and then we'll start with the meeting. Thank you.